So here we go, we're going to talk about special meetings. I did present in summer of 2019 at short courses, I did present this to the clerks and treasures. And they asked that we presented also to the supervisors so that the supervisors know why the clerks are telling them about these special meetings and what needs to be done. Special, consider it a special meeting if the meeting's a different date, time, or place that was established in your regular meeting schedule. So in other words, if you're going to be meeting other than your monthly meetings that have already been established, that is considered a special meeting. So what are the meetings? You have your regular meetings, special meetings, emergency meetings, enclosed meetings. We're going to be going through these and how to post and publish all this, all this information today. Regular meetings of the town board. The town board establish on an established schedule. The frequency of regular meetings is determined by the town board and reflected in the schedule. A schedule of the regular meetings of a township should be kept in the clerk's office. Best practice is to post the meeting schedule and what you can do is post it right outside your town hall or wherever your regular posting place is. Here's an example, this is going to be form one and it's found on page eight of your handout. Here's an example of how to establish your regular monthly meetings. We do this at our township at our reorganizational meeting which is held in April. I go through the calendar and I, we meet the second Wednesday of every month. I actually put the date of those meetings and the time and where they're going to be. And then this is what I post at the town hall with my contact information on the bottom. I also, we just started a website and I will be posting this on our website and this is going to be form two. The open meeting law does not require the schedule to be posted or published, only that it be kept in the clerk's primary office. Best practice is that you do post it so people know when your meetings are going to be. No public business may be transaction on any holiday except in cases of necessity and that is statute. The statute does not define necessity, but the courts have indicated necessity will be presumed when a public body decides to meet on a holiday unless the contrary can be shown. So what are holidays? New Year's Day, January first. Art Luther King Jr.'s birthday, third Monday, Washington and Lincoln's birthday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Christopher Columbus Day is the second Monday and it's, it's optional for local governments. We're going to talk about that in a minute. Veterans Day is a holiday, Thanksgiving Day is the fourth Thursday, November. The Friday after Thanksgiving is also optional for local governments. And then Christmas Day, if any of these fall on a Sunday, the Monday after that would be considered the official holiday. If it happens on a Saturday, then the official holiday would be on Friday. This is best practice. Public bodies may decide whether Christopher Columbus Day and the day after Thanksgiving will be treated as holidays. You can pass a resolution determining if these are going to be official holidays in your township. In your handout on page nine. This is form three, this is a resolution designating those optional holidays, Christopher Columbus and the day after Thanksgiving. Passed by resolution, that means that if you need to meet on those days, you can meet on those days. No meetings can be held on election days. Meetings also may not be conducted between seats six and eight on the day that an election is held within the boundaries of the public body. So if you have any special elections going on in your precinct, you cannot meet between six and eight. Minnesota has two main election dates, the primary election in August and then the general election in November. In 2017, the legislature created five dates that can, special elections can be held. That's the second Tuesday in February, in April, May, and in August. And then of course, second Tuesday after the first Monday in November. If a meeting falls on any of those dates when a special election is held, the township cannot meet between six and eight PM. No public meetings on caucus night, this is statute. No specials taxing district governing body, school board, county board of commissioners, township board, or city council can hold a meeting after six PM. Special meetings are either meetings in addition to your regular meetings or are regular meetings that occur at a different date, time, or place than established in the schedule. So the board typically have broad discretion to call special meetings as needed to conduct their business. For example, if something happens and the clerk is no longer able to do her, her position on the board, the board can call a special meeting to appoint someone to replace her. If you forget to approve a liquor license, it needs to be done before the next board meeting, a special meeting could be called. A quorum of supervisors will not be present for a regular meeting and would like to move it to the following week. So you can call a special meeting to change your regular meeting date. There is no specific procedure for the town board to call a special meeting. Should the chair call? Should there be a consensus before calling a special meeting? Best practice, it is recommended the clerk attempt to gain consent for the meeting from at least the majority of the supervisors. In attempting to gain consent, it is important to avoid any substantive discussions of the issue for which the meeting is being called. It was simply asked, can we be called, we need to call a special board meeting for this date and for this purpose. TM 7000 is a form on our, in our information library, it's about calling a special board meeting. The chairman can call the special board meeting to address any issue or issues required to be considered before the next regular board meeting. The chairman should contact the town clerk of the need for a special board meeting and the town clerk to notify the rest of the supervisors of the date, time, and place of the meeting. And then the town clerk would provide notice of the special meeting as required by the open meeting law. Public bodies must post written notice of a meeting at least three days before the date of the meeting. So supervisors, if you want, this is why your, your clerk will tell you, we cannot meet for a special meeting tomorrow and this is why. Need to post the date, time, and place and the purpose of the meeting. On the bulletin board or where you do your postings. And it has to be three days before the date of the meeting. So when is three days, not three days? The law does not allow the counting of the day of posting or the day of the meeting. So the three days must fall in between those. The open meeting law says the notice is to be posted at least three days before the meeting. So we use the five finger rule. Use your thumb to designate the date, the meeting was posted, so today's Tuesday. So we're going to post the meeting. We have to do three days, the meeting has to be posted. And then the pinky finger would represent the first day the meeting can safely be held. That's why three means five. Post the meeting three days, then you can have the meeting on that fifth day. Weekend days and holidays may be counted as the days of the notice. However, the last day of the posting, that third day falls on a Saturday or Sunday or a legal holiday, that day must be omitted. So on your third day, if it's a Saturday, a Sunday, or a holiday, you need to skip that day, go to the next day for your third day of the posting and then you can have the meeting the following day. Question. Does a special meeting need to be posted in the paper or just posted on township bulletin board? Good question, you do not need to publish a special meeting by statute, you do need to post it. Can we hold a meeting on the weekend? Public meetings may be held on a weekend, however, the Saturday and Sunday may not be counted as the last day of the notice. So if you want to meet on Saturday, today's Tuesday, we're going to post it. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you could meet on Saturday. The entire required period of notice must be satisfied before the weekend. So when is earliest we could meet today? If we were to post a meeting today, the earliest we could meet would be Saturday if you want to do the Saturday weekend meeting, otherwise it would be Monday, that would be the earliest you could meet. Best practice, recommend. Please avoid holding meetings on weekends generally. So here's a notice, it's form four and it's on page 10 of your handout. Notice of the special board meeting. It's going to be on this, the township, the county. This is when we're going to meet, this is the time we're going to meet. And then you need to provide the purpose of the meeting. Why are you going to be meeting other, outside of your regular board meeting? This is what we're going to discuss. This is a notice you can post for a regular meeting, regular board meeting, time or place, this is what you would post, that's form five, page 10 of your handout. The business of the special meeting cannot exceed those listed in the purpose of the meeting. Exceeding that notice, what you are putting on your notice of what you're going to discuss could constitute a violation of the open meeting law. So make sure that you're listing all the purposes for your meeting. So if you are having a special meeting and your clerk, and you start going off on a different subject, your clerk's going to stop you and say, that's not why we're having this meeting. We need to wait and have another meeting to discuss that or we need to do it at our regular board meeting. So don't get upset when your clerk says you can't talk about that, it's part of the statute and you don't want to violate the open meeting law. There are people in your township that may request to notice of special meetings. The request must be in writing and the notice should be posted, mailed and mailed or delivered at least three days before the date of the meeting. And there, it has to be limited to specific, maybe they, they're asking, I only want to notice of special meetings when you're talking about roads. I only want to know when you're having special meetings to talk about the fire contract or the grading contract. They can say if they want specific subjects or if they want to be notified for all special meetings that are called. And an alternative to mailing otherwise littering questions, either written request for special meetings, they, then you can publish it if you want to publish it in the newspaper at least three days before the meeting. So there's a, to answer that other question, if there's somebody in your township that has requested notice of public, the special meetings, instead of using the mail, it might not get there three days before the meeting, you can publish it in your newspaper. And that can be difficult because a lot of the newspapers are only published once a week, so that can cause difficulties as well. So how long does this written notice last? Well, the board may can establish an annual expiration date for notices. Not more than 60 days before the expiration of date of the request for notice. The public body shall send notice of the refiling requirement to each person who filed during the proceeding year. So it can be, this written notice can be formally annually reviewed and updated and this is Minnesota statute 13D point zero four. Can you review continued meeting parameters? I do believe I'll be talking about that later. If I don't, please ask the question again and I'll briefly go over, but I think it's later in our presentation. Best practice, if a public body is interested in establishing an expiration date, it is best to be done by resolution. And the board can develop a standard form for making requests for notices, special meetings. The benefit of such a form is to develop a uniform manner, manner of making the request. Here's an example, form eight, six, page 10 of the handout. Resolution establishing an annual expiration date for requests of special notice of special meetings. So here would be the resolution saying that this is going to be, the request is going to be on an annual basis and you will need to renew on an annual basis. Here's the request that you will, you may get from a resident requesting notice of the special meeting. You see that it says wish to receive notice of special meetings or just limit the special meeting notices if you're talking about this. Understand it'll expire, name, address, mail the form, all this needs to be filled out. And this is something your clerk would send to those people that have requested notices, special meetings. Notice that your request is going to be expiring. And make sure you send it out 60 days before the actual expiration date. If you fail to send the notice, it would continue, you should continue to send that person. If you don't send this notice, you need to continue to let that person who requested notice, you need to continue sending them until you send that expiration out. At the special meeting. Special meetings are conducted outside the regular board meeting. Of course, have an extra copy available at the meeting for the public of any written materials that you're going to be giving to your board. If a member of the town board or a member of the public attempts to raise issues at the meeting that fall outside the scope of the meeting's purpose, the chair, normally the clerk will say, Mr. Chairman, that's out of what we outlined that this special meeting was going to be about. It's important that I record is completely important when dressing issues such as permitting and licenses. So if you're having a special meeting about any permits or licenses, clerk needs to make sure that those get in your minutes. What about site inspections? Town boards are allowed to conduct onsite inspections without complying with the requirements in the open meeting law if they do not have employees or staff able to perform, to perform those inspections. So if you have staff, you need to send your staff out. If the town has staff, the employee and one supervisor for a three-person board or two supervisors or a five-person board can go out and inspect with the staff person. Road tours, clerks do not have to go out on road tours, but notes need to be taken. When you're doing your road tours. My, my board, like, they all like to go, all three of them like to go, so I post and I publish that we're going to be going on a road tour. No decisions are to be made on that road tour, only notes. The road tour, the decisions you make on what you want to do with your roads needs to be at a regular meeting, open to the public. So special meetings. There's a difference between a special meeting and a special town meeting. Special meetings are town board meetings and are run like a regular board meeting. Special town meeting is government governed by the statute 365.52. Special town meetings involve the town electorate and that's like your annual meeting. Special town meetings are called by the supervisors and clerk or two board members and 12 electors or by petition of 20% of the elected voted at the last election. A notice of this special town meeting must be published 10 days before the special meeting. So to answer the question about, let's say your annual meeting, and a lot of townships do this, the annual meeting, the biggest topic you need to get discussed is your levy. At your annual town meeting. Perhaps you want to revisit this before you actually certify your levy to the county. At the annual town meeting in March. You need to have a motion to recess the meeting. And that it will reconvene at this date, this time, this place. And then you can go and it's not considered a special meeting, you're just continuing your annual meeting and that would be to discuss your levy or any, you know, anything that was not discussed at your annual meeting. Can email versus letter fulfill requirement notice for someone who requests notice for special meetings? You can do email if they, if that works for them. And then you would get that, David, you would get that to them with that, in that three, three-day period. So yes, email and nowadays in technology, email works. So what's an emergency meeting? Emergency meeting is a special meeting called because of circumstances that in the judgment of the town board require immediate consideration by the town board and that's statute. This is something that is immediately it is for the safety of the town. Special meetings, again, three-day posted notice and then notify the affected, the people that want to know about those special meetings. Question. Our board decides on this. What is needed on each section of the road, on our road inspection meeting? The meeting is open and posted and published for everyone to welcome to go along. No way could they remember each part of the, each road and wait for the monthly board meeting to make decisions even with notes. How would they be expected to hold a road inspection tour without discussing what is needed and forming a consensus? And that's a good question. If you can find a bus. Oh, the reason they can't have, make those decisions is because you could be in violation of the open meeting law. Open meeting law, the public has to be there. They have to be able to hear what you're saying. They have to be able to hear what you're saying. A lot, there's many people that when they do their road inspections, they will put in their notice that they're going to be meeting at the town hall right after that for the meeting to make those decisions. I go on the road tour with the, with the board and I'm taking all the notes and I am very specific, it's at this 911 address on this road that we're going to, we're looking at, something needs to be done, this is what needs to be done. So then at the board meeting, I'll go through those notes, I'll give those notes to them prior to the meeting. But you can, you can meet at the town hall or wherever after that road tour, but make sure you post that and then you can make those decisions at that meeting. People do hear what is being said because it's done outside, not inside cars or vans. It is an open meeting, so we aren't in violation. As long as you give, put notice that people are able to do that, as long as you're making, Paul, as long as you're making those decisions outside the vehicle and everybody can hear what you're saying and that you're posting that in your, in your posting of that meeting, then open meeting laws have to be in public, so. There you go, you're welcome, Paul. I'm sorry, Kristen, I keep forgetting to do done when I answer these questions. Okay. Emergency meetings, emergency meetings posted or published notice of the meeting is not required because it's an emergency. If a news meeting like your paper, radio, TV, that filed a written request of notice, a good effort must be made to notify them, but only if you have their phone number. So emergency meetings are emergency meetings, you need to do something, you need to do something right now. So posting and publishing is, is very, very difficult to do that. So what is an emergency? An emergency meeting can only be called if the situation, immediate action is needed to protect the public's peace, health, or safety. Minnesota statute defines emergency as an unforeseen combination of circumstances that calls for immediate action to prevent disaster from developing or occurring. So the road's washed out. We need to get out there, we need to get out there now, we need to put up our cones, we need to see what we're going to be doing because if somebody comes out here and falls into that ravine, we are in trouble. So road washouts need to be done immediately. What is an emergency? Calling an emergency meeting because you have a great deal on a piece of equipment is not constitute an emergency. You would have to do a special meeting. Self-created emergencies are also not within this calling an emergency meeting. For instance, waiting to the last minute to take action on an administrative matter does not give rise to an emergency for the purpose of the open meeting law. So you have your board meeting, you realize the next day. Shoot, we forgot to pay a bill. You cannot get everybody together right that day and say need this bill, need an amount, we need to get the checkout, you have to have a special meeting for that, it's not an emergency. So self-created emergencies are those, we forgot to approve a license, we forgot to pay a bill, we forgot to talk about whatever is not an emergency. Take reasonable steps to keep a record of the proceeding, including the record. Okay. Emergency meeting, the purpose of the meeting, so make, when you're doing these emergencies meetings, make sure that you're keeping a good record of what the purpose was and what was discussed or acted upon. The minutes must include a specific description of these matters, so you need to be specific in the minutes. What you're doing at this emergency meeting. So however, to the extent the public does attend the meeting, take reasonable steps under the circumstances to comply with the usual meeting procedures and requirements that would normally apply to your meetings. So in the event that public is there at your emergency meeting, motions, make sure you're approving them, you called the meeting order, this is where we're at, this is what we discussed, this is what we need to do, can I get a motion? Best practices, public bodies are strongly discouraged from attempting to discuss or take action on matters, matters not related to the emergency at hand. So again, like special meetings, you are there for this emergency, this is what you're going to talk about. Don't go off on, you know, by the way, over there on the old Hayvek Road, you know, we need to do this too. You can't do that, just like a special meeting. Again, keep detailed records of all authorizations and expenditures, especially if there is a chance FEMA may or other financial reimbursements to your community for the emergency. FEMA may offer financial reimbursements when it comes to FEMA. You got to keep everything, 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 everything that you do when it comes to FEMA because they're going to want all those dates, all those receipts, every, everything you've done. When it comes to FEMA, because they're going to want all those dates, all those receipts, every, everything you've done. Zoom meetings that are recorded plus minutes, how is that change one replace the other? Uh, you do have to keep meetings for all minutes for all of your meetings, the record of the zooming is does not replace. Actual minutes in your minute book, minutes are something you need to keep forever and they. It, it, the recording of the meeting does not replace actual minutes. So what's a closed meeting? A closed meeting is one which excludes the public, closed meetings are generally prohibited by the open minimum unless there's a statutory exception. So when can a meeting be closed? Question, okay, can you use a zoom rec- record to write the minutes, yes, Eric, you can use the zoom recording to write your minutes. You're welcome, Eric. So you may close a meeting to evaluate the performance of an individual who is subject to boards authority. So you have a staff member, you're going to be talking about their performance, you may close the meeting. You may close the meeting for a time attorney client privileges. You may to determine the asking price for real or personal property to be sold by the town. Labor negotiations receive security briefings, so those are, uh, times where you may close the meeting. Uh, question from Greg, can one board member authorize an emergency repair on a road washout on a major township road without holding an emergency meeting? If you have staff. If you have somebody that it takes care of your roads, otherwise you do need to have a forum. For those emergency meetings, you need to have more than one supervisor there to make that decision. So when must you close a meeting? Allegations or charges against an individual subject to the board's authorities, so if you have a staff member. Um, that has had allegations or charges against them, you must close the meeting. Any data that you'd be talking about that would identify alleged victims. Or reporters of criminal sexual conduct, domestic abuse or maltreatment of minors or vulnerable adults. You must close the meeting when you're talking about any of this stuff. Any data that concerns an investigation of law enforcement personnel, so if you have your own police department, anything like that, you have to close your meeting. Uh, any data that concerns the education, health, medical welfare, mental health, that is not public data, then you must pose the meaning for that. Do the open meeting on notice requirements of opposed meetings, yes. Even though a meeting is closed, it must still be noticed and the requirements of the open moving law must be met, this is statute. So if you're going to have a closed meeting, yes, you still need to give notice and follow all the requirements of the open meeting law. Best practice since a closed meeting is generally a special event on the board's calendar. Matt recommends that to the extent possible, those meetings be posted and handled as special meetings. So what's the procedure to go into a closed meeting? Post session or closed meeting, the board must be at an open meeting. If you need to call a special meeting, then two notices would be required, one for the open meeting and one for the closed meeting. Or one notice that addresses both the open and closed components of that meeting. So if you call a special closed meeting, you need to post that you're having a special meeting and it's going to be open, but then it's going to be closed. During the open session, the town board should formally move on the record and in the minutes to close the open meeting. And go into a closed meeting for the purpose of the closed meeting. We have this in our township, we had, um, our attorney there and it was some legal issues that we needed to discuss, it was a regular board meeting. I did post that we would be closing the meeting for attorney client privilege. During that meeting, we asked people to go outside, we closed the meeting, we had a discussion with our attorney. Went back outside and said, close meeting is, is over, we're going to reconvene our regular meeting. So here's another notice of the special meeting, this is, this is page, uh, 12 in the handout, this form. Um, this is why we're going to be closing our meeting. And then it'll be closed, this is why we're going to close it. Um, all those need to be taken in that notice. There's a little blow up, special closed meeting, this is why we're closing, this is what's going to be discussed. Auto recordings and minutes for closed meetings, towns must audio record those meetings, accept those closed under the attorney client privilege. And preserve those recordings for at least three years, that's statute. The open meeting law does not expressly require minutes to be kept for closed meetings. Check with your town attorney, if close me, me minute should be taken, sometimes they'll say, yes, please take these minutes. If minutes are taken, they should be separate from your regular minutes. And held under seal and not disclosed, except under the court order or a specific resolution of the board. So closed meetings, ask your town, your town attorney if minutes should be taken. And then again, those minutes are kept separate from your regular minutes in your, in your clerk's book. Is just putting in it on the agenda, considered notice is just putting. That you're going to be closed, considered notice, you do need to post that you're going to be having a closed meeting. So just putting it on the agenda and people seeing that when they get to the meeting is not notice. So you would still need to post notice that during this meeting, we are going to be closing for this purpose. All right, I hope all this helped. If, uh, I'm going to leave this up, if you have any more questions. Uh, Lucinda Petra and I are the trainers for Matt and we are available to answer any questions that anybody has at any time, I've got our contact information there. A lot of times I'll get phone calls, I see I missed a phone call and I don't have a message. So if you want me to call you back, you know, this, I get busy, especially now with springtime coming, but. I don't know to call you back or what your issue is unless you leave me a message or send me an email. So thank you all for being here, I hope this helps the boards, I hope it helps your clerks, so you know why they're doing what they're doing. Continued meeting, that's, um. What about a continued meeting, that would be like with your annual meeting, if you have a board meeting. Say you have a board meeting tonight and you didn't, everything done that you needed to get done. You would need to have a motion to continue the meeting. And it would be, this is when it's going to be, this is what time it's going to be, and this is where it's going to be. Uh, you mean, don't need an agenda because you're continuing from the regular board meeting and things that you did not get to. I hope that answered your question. We still have some time, so any questions, otherwise. You know, like I said, email me, give me a phone call, any of us would be able to help as much as we can, if we don't have the answer. We will investigate it or send you on to the person that can answer it. A lot of times when I get emails, I will, uh, respond and carbon happy are township attorneys. Um, and then they'll respond, we use continuing meetings for road review, is that proper views? So you're going through your road review and then you continue the meeting, um, so that you can make decisions, yes, that would be the proper use for a continued meeting. As long as you state in your minutes that this is where we're going to meet, what they were going to meet, what time we're going to meet. I don't know if we want to just hang out, because we still have a few minutes, Kristen, so I don't know if we want to just hang out. I, uh, another question, I'm worried that when reply all to email happens, it could be a meeting. When you do emails, reply all is not an option because yes, then it is considered a forum. So when you get emails, like from your clerk, your clerk will send probably an email to all of you. Asking, is this going to work, just reply, not reply all, because that is considered a violation of the open meeting.
Yeah, if you want to hang out, you can Lori, otherwise we can take a break, um, you can sign off.
I'm going to hang up for. Listen, Steve, so.
Very thanks.
Is Steve, is Steve next?
I think so, yeah.
So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna step away quick and then if there's any questions, I'll come back and answer them before Steve, is that okay?
Yep, oh, we have a couple of raised hands, actually.
Okay.
Let me see those, I'm gonna make them a panelist, then they can say their question out loud.
Okay.
Hey, Kristen and Lori, there is a tone in the background, it sounds like a fax machine. I don't know if anybody.
There might have been a little sound ringing, um, when Lori's video was, um, on, might just be the technology.
Sounds good.
It can either be technology mail or the 40 mile an hour winds outside my window.
Oh, yeah.
I have the same thing, so, uh, no, it, it's, it sounds just like a fax tone.
So Greg or Quentin, you can unmute and then ask a question, otherwise. Let me know if you didn't have a question and I can just bump you back down to an attendee.
You don't have a question?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
So if you're getting promoted, if you have raised your hand, you can unmute and ask a question if you have, and I see Steve Fenske is here, so I will. Find Steve.
Am I unmuted, Kristen?
Um, I heard you for a moment there, Jim, you gotta do it one more time if you have a question to ask.
Uh, I had a comment, uh, on Lori's presentation. Every once in a while, it kind of come in like Mickey Mouse for just a little while.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately with, uh, internet services, that happens. I don't have any helium or anything that I'm.
I know sometimes, um, if, if you had your video turned off, maybe your internet could do the audio better. And it wouldn't do that like backing up, but it's also very good to see you and like know that you're, uh, an actual person presenting. That's probably edge the tech thing, Jim. Lori, did you see there's a couple of questions? Q and A?
Uh, can you direct me to acceptable use policy for email and devices? I don't know if that is a, maybe an attorney question, I don't know what the acceptable use is for emails. Steve, hi.
Hi, we don't have a sample, I don't think we have a sample, uh, electronic device use policy. Give us an email and I'll see, I don't, I don't think we have one, we'll see if we can find one, you might be able to use, link you to something. But when you get technology that's owned by somebody else, how can you use it, what are the rules of using it?
Right. You need to use separate notice for continued meeting, as long as it's in your minutes that you are continuing your meeting and it has the date, time, place. You do not need to have a separate notice.
Francis, you have a question?
Yes, I do, I have a question, we had, uh. A different treasurer voted in in our township. And before we could swear her in, she was on an already planned vacation. And, uh, we're having some trouble with our previous treasurer not wanting to give over the checks and stuff. And we're wondering before she gets back and gets, uh. Sworn in, if the clerk can write out the checks for the bills.
That's a nod from Steve, yes. Yes.
Okay, so he could have the, the chest could be brought to the clerk and let him take care of the checks for the billing.
Correct.
That answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Lamb, do you want to unmute if you have a question, otherwise I'll put you back in the other list of attendees.
I have no question.
Okay, thanks.
I got another question, David, um. Notice same as posting, not publishing. Not sure, notice of a meeting, you know, it depends on what the meeting is again, if you have to publish it or post, and I guess I'm not, I need a little clarity to the question.
I think he's talking about the continued meeting.
Oh, okay.
Uh, for continued meeting, the idea is we don't need posting or publishing, but if you were going to do anything, you would just have to post it. Does Mel have a question, I see he is one of our presenters.
No, I'm just sitting, I'm just sitting on.
Hanging out.
From the beginning.
It's good.
How are you doing?
Excellent.
Good, hey Lori, that was a good presentation.
Thank you, Mel.
We need to do more of that for the supervisors.
We hear that from the clerks all the time.
We really do.
We have one from Dennis, question from Dennis. Dennis was unmuted for a moment and now you're muted again.
Are there handouts available for all these, uh, force sessions today?
Yes. They're on our web. They're on our webpage. MNtownships.org, go to training events and you should see them in there. They're also being recorded, so it's not immediate. It does not right when it gets done. It takes some time to get these things up on the web, but the recordings of the, of the presentations will be up too. And Kristen very nicely put the direct link in the chat, which is even better than you having to go to our website. Thank you.
Well, I think I'm going to mute myself. Hand it over to Steve. If there's any other questions, I'm still, oh, one more question. Any concerns about posting township notes on Facebook group? Uh, yeah. If they're not approved, especially. Township notes, I hope if you're talking about minutes, you better make sure that they're, they've been approved by the board, board before you post them anywhere. If they're not approved by the board and somebody sees them, they're going to say, but that's what he posted. And so that's got to be the fact. So if you're going to be doing any of that, just make sure that they've already been approved by the town board before you post them anywhere.
Social media in general, be cautious if you can close the page down, so comments are not available. That is the best practice because once somebody puts a comment on your township page, you can't remove it unless it is truly obscene or even certain kinds of hate speech are protected, so. Don't allow chat. If people want a place to, to talk and converse, they can do that. You, they don't need the town to create a Facebook page. They're perfectly capable. So be aware, if you're going to use social media, how people can interact and what they can say and your limits in being able to control that page.
All right, Steve, it's all about you.